Community at large for those who did not receive it. As concerned citizens by APS District 2, and let me just mention as the Chairperson and Founder of that organization, I've now merged in with Trump first. We believe that our district is yet again being asked to willfully accept an unequal and separate educational system for our children in our communities. We are making this request based on the following reasons. There are before amidst the worst cheating scandal in the history of education, District 2 Board Representative resigned, leaving APS' most vulnerable population of students without elected leaderships for months. Without having District 2's elected leadership at the table, APS extended a contract for the current superintendent position without waiting for us to have our elected leadership a part of the process. We took this as another sign of disrespect and a slap in the face to us from District 2. While trying to gain our footing from the cheating scandal, we were then thrust into one of the nastiest and vile electoral campaigns in Atlanta in over twenty years. This has caused many in our community to be quite disillusioned with APS and the electoral camp process. Before we could effectively find ways to work with APS regarding the thousands of children who have been injured by APS, we now have to deal with a massive redistricting process. This redistricting process has caused for the closing of schools, the majority, eighty percent, also the schools caught in the cheating scandal, which are also located in District 2. This alone makes us in District 2 believe that the method APS is choosing to clean up the cheating mess is just to close the schools, never to mind what the public relations scheme would do to the children in our community. Mr. Davis, for these reasons and these reasons alone, we're asking that you put an halt, H-A-L-T. That's again, H-A-L-T, to this process.
Ms. Linda Adams, Ms. Adams will be followed by Tris C. Signano, and again, we ask you to take the seat. Ms. Adams, is she here? Ms. Tris C. Signano? Doug Wood? Your name, ma'am? Please. And you'll be followed by Mr. Doug Wood, and then Mr. Patrick Crabtree.
Good evening, my name is Tris Cignano, I'm in Eastlake residence. I just want to voice my concern about the Coen situation. APS has, is going to basically decimate easily. We're closing our elementary school, we're closing our middle school, and shipping us to King Middle School several miles away. Many of those children walk to school and will no longer be able to participate in after school programs because their parents do not have an automobile. We only have one charter school. The school you're proposing to send Coen, sorry, our Coen children to, has two charter schools, and the majority of the children at Coens do live in a neighborhood and do walk to school. Secondly, you're asking us to be taken out of our high school during a transition period. That is so much for one, for several communities to carry. We just cannot carry that burden, it's quite a lot, and I hope that you rethink that process.
Mr. Doug Wood, Doug Wood will be followed by Patrick Crabtree, and Mr. Crabtree will be followed by Barbara Cobble. Mr. Crabtree, can you take the seat, please?
Good evening, I'm Doug Wood, I'm a tumor parent. I have two children in third grade and two and a half year old. As we've gone through this process in Kirkwood and Eastlake, we've seen it evolve into many different scenarios that have been pitting our neighbors against neighbors, directly in our neighborhood, not neighborhoods against neighborhoods, but within our neighborhood. We've been sliced and diced, and so we've come out with mixed messages. One portion of the neighborhood's going to merge with Lynn, so they're all excited. We have another portion that's going to go over to Whiteford. We have another portion that's going to Burgess. We continue to have, we do not have clarity within the system, and then we end up with a response back that we're now going to Jackson. We've asked for opportunity to look at scenarios on K-8. We've tried to put out scenarios to grow and build up the cluster at Coen to have capacity to alleviate from other schools surrounding the tumor community. These have not fallen on deaf ears until we're at the point of closing that school, and now we'll have it open with other students in it as we walk by every day. It's been discerning, the process has not been clear, we have not been able to include all of our neighbors in it, and so we have mixed messages. It's been a frustrating and enduring process for our neighbors, and it continues to go on. I hope you'll reconsider this and look at the options. Equally to us, we've asked many times to see what would be a rejuvenation of Coen and added resources that have been lacking for so long at that school, and we've been rebuffed on that time and time again. So, I ask you to look at that process and see where we're moving. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Patrick Crabtree will be followed by Barbara Cobble, and Ms. Cobble will be followed by Bevan Carpenter. Ms. Cobble, if you could take the seat, please. Mr. Crabtree?
Good evening, Board Members. I'm listening to all the conversations tonight. Yes, we have some very serious concerns, but I ask the audience, where were you when everyone thought Beverly Hall could do nothing wrong? We all had to take reins of APS. This is all of our problems. Where were we? We have to take ownership of this problem. We have to come back together to make this work.
Right.
We have to find a way to get those three thousand kids that are in charter schools back to our public schools.
Right.
So that way, we wouldn't have to close our public, totally public schools. But tonight, I'm not just coming for that, I'm coming tonight to actually say on a personal level, thank you very much. When I came to you with a problem about technology, boy, they were there the next day. I have now eight new beautiful computers in my computer lab that I can now service all of my students at one time. So therefore, I want to really thank you on behalf of that. You've done a yoga job on this, these proposals, because those first four sucked. But I know, this is going to be a challenge, but I really think that getting back to the cluster is going to really help our children more than any, and I do applaud you for your hard work. I know someone's going to not be happy, but personally, again, thank you on our side, Abby Marton. As an APAB co-chair for education, one concern is that the committee was very upset, and a lot of people with the APAB Board would like that you really consider, as you do have empty buildings, not to sell them.
Right.
That eventually, these properties will come back, and we don't need to sell low and buy high. That's not very financially responsible. But I also come tonight asking, please get with the teachers, let us know what we're going to do, especially for those with the K-2, 3-5 split. How will we do, how will we be assigned to our schools, what's going to go on? But there's a lot of concerns, a lot of unrest, and people are calling me, I'm no longer the President, but they're still calling me because I have that relationship with it, and I would like to be able to give them some reliable data. So, I know this is a challenge, but thank you for all you do.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Cobble.
All right, Ms. Cobble will be followed, Cobble will be followed by Bevan Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter will be followed by Eric Overby. And if Mr. Carpenter can take a seat. All right, good, thank you.
Yes, my name is Barbara Cobble, and I'm the co-manager of Graduation Generation, which is currently housed at Coen Middle School, and I'd like to yield my time to my co-manager, Bevan Carpenter.
Mr. Carpenter, you'll have six minutes.
Good evening, my name is Bevan Carpenter, I'm also a co-manager of Graduation Generation, and I have a letter from some parents of Coen Middle School. Their Superintendent and Board Members, we appreciate that operating costs must be reduced. However, should they be reduced at the expense of Coen Middle School students, staff, and community? It makes no sense for Virginia Highland students to be bused to Edgewood, nor does it make sense for Edgewood, Kirkwood, and Eastlake students to be bused to Grand Park. The Superintendent oft frequently talks about walkability. Most of our parents are without transportation. There are a number of students that are responsible for walking their younger siblings to elementary school, and a larger number of parents that must walk their students to school as well. If our students are bused to King, what would happen to the younger siblings? What would happen with the parents that have to start early shifts and depend on older siblings from Coen to pick up their brothers and sisters? It seems you have decided that their walkability does not matter. However, we increase, how can we increase parental involvement? Their parents would not be able to get to school. To open a sixth grade academy for Inman students, but tell the students of Edgewood, Kirkwood, and Eastlake that are five feet from their school, that they are not allowed at their building? At this point, we have no neighborhood schools past elementary. First, it was Krim High School, now Coen. It is also disheartening, given the timing, the timing of the latest proposal. We were not given a chance to advocate for our schools, because Coen was not mentioned on any other options. We spent our time working with Whiteford to keep that neighborhood school open.
Yeah, that's right.
We did not realize we were on the Superintendent's radar to be closed. So now, what happens to the Coen Community Whiteford Clinic at Coen? What happens to the Coen Elementary School Yard? What happens to the Mandarin Program? What happens to Graduation Generation? The amount of time money spent on these, to be able to impact, I say impact, each and every child at Coen and the surrounding communities. We propose instead of using our school for Inman Sixth Grade Academy, to use one of the elementary schools in the graded cluster that is closing. Or to relieve overcrowded at Inman Mary Lynn, can be redistricted to Coen, because at first it was stated that it was too dangerous to cross the campus.
All right.
But now, they have bills to cross the campus. It is not fair to uproot our students from their school and community to satisfy the needs of others. It seems to be the most undermining way to split and destroy our community. And we can't choose to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Eric Overby, and Mr. Overby will be followed by Abby Martin, and Ms. Martin will be followed by Tim Langen. Mr. Overby?
Thank you very much, my name is Eric Overby. I am a Channing Gollum resident and father of a son who will be attending the Moore's Brandon Primary Center next year. And one thing that seems pretty common across all the comments is that the APS parents and stakeholders, we all love our community schools.
Right, right.
Really, regardless of where we live, we all love our schools, and the specter of being zoned out of a school or having a school closed is very upsetting, and in the community that I'm a part of are very grateful for the current proposal, which doesn't subject any students to be moved out of their community schools. And I understand the sentiment from everyone else who is faced with that, and how difficult that can be. I appreciate that it's not on the current program for where I live, and I understand the concerns others have about that. I think that continuity of the schools begets investment in the schools.
Right.
That if the community believes that the school will be there, and the school will become better, the stability begets the investment. If we disrupt the stability, we start having people withdraw from the system, and that would be a vicious cycle potentially.
Right.
I also, you know, given where we are, I appreciate the current proposal. I think it makes a lot of sense, it's very fiscally responsible, to invest in the current schools rather than sort of buying real estate and building new schools, which is on the plan for some of the considerations that we've moved beyond in the last round. I also believe it's fiscally prudent to have the single middle school in the Sutton Campus, or excuse me, keep Sutton intact at the North Atlanta Campus. At this point, capacity can handle it. It avoids the startup cost with creating a new school that frankly doesn't need to be paid in terms of trying to get re-accreditation for certain programs that are already intact, developing a new sort of PTA support structure that can support the new school. If we don't need it, let's don't go create it. And so, I'm happy to see the current proposal keeps the neighborhood schools intact, at least in my area, in the sort of northern side, and also keeps the middle school intact. Thank you.
Ms. Abby Martin will be followed by Tim Langen.
I have prepared something for you. Something to read tonight, and I'm not going to read it. I'm going to read the first paragraph, and then I'm going to go on the line. I'm a parent of three Atlanta Public Schools children in the Grady Cluster. And the Grady Cluster includes Centennial Place Elementary School, Eastlake Elementary School, Hope Hill Elementary School, Mary Lynn Elementary School, Morningside Elementary School, Springdale Park Elementary School, and Timber Elementary School. It includes three middle schools, Coen, Inman, and King, and we all feed into Grady High School. All of these schools are equally important to the fabric of the Grady Cluster. I have worked in these schools and through these schools for over a decade, raising probably more money for some of the schools in this cluster than I have for the own, the schools my own children attend. And there has been a disparate resourcing for principals and teachers in these schools, and it has led to a different outcome. And when I look at where the cheating schools were in my cluster, they were in some of the schools tonight that I think are most impacted in terms of the redistricting, and my heart is absolutely breaking for them. They are part of us, they deserve to be part of the Grady Cluster, and if we're going to present a proposal where you pull out a couple of schools, I might could understand that, because we are severely overcrowded in certain schools and overcrowded in others. But when you add three other school communities back into the mix, I know you've had a discussion about how you're going to manage all that, it becomes kind of apparent to me, it seems to be a rather political process, that those communities where you have people like me who have a law degree, have lectures, stay at home, we can Twitter, we can, I don't know how to Facebook or Twitter, I have to own that one, but they can mount these big campaigns with grassroots petitions, claiming thousands of signature petitions and cutting people out of our cluster. I'd really like for you to thoughtfully consider whether or not you can't just keep us together as the Grady Cluster we've known for so long, and these parents have just as much expectation their children will go to these schools as I have in Morningside. They're very, very important families, but as you move forward, if you don't keep them in the Grady Cluster, I think you have to seriously look, I know, I can't say names, but I know certain divisions and programs, I've heard what you have planning, and I encourage you to move forward with those, but please, please consider that every single school needs a quality principal, quality teachers, and quality resourcing. And if you see that any things are not equitable, please, let's not wait a month, two months, or a year. Let's go ahead and fix those things so that in the fall, everybody will be in a better situation in terms of school. Because we are a community, and I would like for fall of 2012 to begin with all the schools that are in the Grady Cluster, and if we're going to be building schools, let's just build them a little bit better to be more inclusive. Thank you.
Mr. Langen, and Mr. Langen will be followed by Suzanne Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell will be followed by Reverend Joe Flint.
Hi, I'm Tim Langen. I'm a parent of two elementary school students and one Inman Middle School student, and future parent of three Grady students. With a planned capacity of just over thirteen hundred at Grady, I have concerns about the future enrollment projections at Grady with the way the map's been drawn. We're at a time when the capture rate of the existing Inman school is increasing as we get to the high school level, at the same time, the population in those neighborhoods is increasing. Cecily earlier today talked about what the enrollment in 2012 might look like this coming fall, based on the new neighborhoods that are immediately zoned into Grady that are not today, plus any students that are grandfathered from transfers and that are still part of Grady as the magnet program phases out. So I just would like to say, I encourage you to take another hard look at the demographer's work as it relates to the Grady Cluster. Even, this is even after the students who graduate have been grandfathered in, and after the magnet has completely phased out. I just think it's relying on too unrealistically low of a capture rate of what we're getting out of neighborhoods like, you know, Canwell Park and others, and what we'll see at, what we're going to see at Grady here just in the coming years, it just seemed like it was artificially less. So I'd like to ask your consideration there. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Mitchell will be followed by Reverend Joe Flint. Reverend Flint will be followed by Duanda Farmer.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Mitchell from Summerhill, zoned to Cook, now to Eastlake. We want to be zoned to Parkside for the following four reasons. It's closer and safer for us to walk to Parkside, point four miles closer and ten minutes shorter. Two, excessive redistricting with closures of McGill Elementary in 2006 and now Cook in 2012. Chaney Field, APS plans a sporting facility in the heart of Summerhill, but won't give us the best school options. It's okay to build, but not educate. Four, and last but not least, Summerhill is in District 1, so is Inman Park, but Inman Park gets to leave District 1 to attend better schools K through 12 in District 3. Why? Why does Inman Park, why doesn't Inman Park attend Hope Hill, closer and in District? If you allow this clear preferential treatment and not allow the same treatment for Summerhill, this is a clear violation of our children's rights.
Clear.
If it's okay for Inman Park to go to Mary Lynn for better schools, then it has to be okay for Summerhill to go to Parkside for better schools in District. The precedent has been set. Fix it. Summerhill to Parkside, we will not be treated differently, we will not be denied, and we will hold every single board member accountable, and APS, for this mischaracter of justice in our district. Thank you.
Reverend Joe Flint, Reverend Flint will be followed by Ms. Duanda Farmer, and Ms. Farmer will be followed by Shawna Hayes Tavares.
Good evening. Somewhere I read that APS educates forty-seven thousand students, but has the capacity to educate sixty thousand. I read we must make decisions that are in the best educational interest of our students. And so with these quotes taken directly from the Superintendent's recommendation, I submit this. First, being a product of Atlanta Public Schools and a parent, I believe solely in our system. What I don't believe in is the demolition that is taking place within our schools and the community.
Right.
Based on a study. As I have done my own study, I have learned for some financial, in some financial areas in which we could save money rather than demolish our community and schools. Please check the facts what I read in the Superintendent's report for ten high school clusters, but according to budget, we would be paying for seventeen principals, as that is because that some of our high schools have smalls. So with that being said, we should be spending one point seven million to two point three million dollars each year on the high school principal salaries. None of the additional set principals are needed for the small schools. My recommendation is that you bring back the magnet program. Between three and quarters of a million dollars to one million dollars will be saved if you're away from the small schools. I am not a CPA, but I am able to do simple math, and if someone is needed to help you save and cut the budget, please check my record. See, I was in the military, CJTF seventy-six, that's 2005, 2006, in Afghanistan. Myself alone, Sergeant Guido saves the US Army three million dollars that year by implementing a hot meal plan. So if you need somebody to help you with money, please call on me. But if not, but if not, try calling that husband and wife who work two part-time jobs each and every day to make sure that their children are fed. How about calling that mother who raises three children by herself each and every night to make sure that their children fed? These people seem to manage money each and every day on their own recognizance, so why can't the Atlanta Board of Education make that happen as well?
Ms. Duanda Farmer, and Ms. Farmer will be followed by Shawna Hayes Tavares, and Ms. Tavares will be followed by Jeremy Moser.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. This evening I rise representing the Board of Education District 2 Neighborhoods and Communities, and I would like to invite all of the people who are in the audience that are also supporting District 2 schools to rise while I read excerpts from a statement that I provided, Dr. Grant, and hopefully he provided each and every member and the Superintendent their individual copy. We, the Atlanta Board of Education District 2 Neighborhoods and Communities, believe now is the time for you to act. With our schools' legacies in mind, by coming together to collaborate on ensuring that all the schools remain open so they can become highly capable to endow our children, black, brown, white, or whatever, with learning competencies to succeed in life and to make a sustainable 21st century for the common good of everyone everywhere. We believe the state of Georgia's future, growth and economic development hinge upon having an educated citizenry and workforce, which we believe can only be accomplished through quality public education. The sad fact is, Atlanta Board of Education District 2 encompasses not one highly capable elementary, middle, or high school as measured by test scores. We believe that to close any of our schools is to invite greater economic and educational dysfunction and hardship. The high school dropout rate exceeds seventy percent in some of our communities, and it is disastrous to our state's economy, and it is ruinous to community revitalization efforts. More than seventy-five percent of the schools in District 2 experience the most extreme cheating. We have five schools in the district scheduled for closing while we're opening additional charter schools and building new schools outside of our district. Many of us voted for the Slos in District 2 because we believe the ten million dollar renovation would occur at Gideon's. A nine point four million dollar renovation would happen at Cox Middle, and three million dollars would be invested into Kennedy Middle School, which are on the list for closing. The Schatz Foundation provided a report on Black Boys in Education that showed that we have grossly failed black children in Atlanta Public Schools. The Atlanta Public School System fails over half of its black male students with inequalities in graduation rates, inequities in national assessment and education progress, and inequities in discipline, special education, and advanced placement. We're graduating thirty-four percent of black males as compared to seventy percent of white males. Let it be you, let it be you whose legacy it is that changed the way we educated children in Atlanta. We have failed to educate children for the last twenty years, and it is evidenced by just having a conversation with people who are unable to speak the King's English. I beg of you, let it be you, let it be now, that you change education for our children.
Ms. Tavares will be followed by Jeremy Moser, and Mr. Moser will be followed by Alyssa Silberman. Ms. Hayes Tavares?
Thank you, Superintendent Davis, Board Members. Really, I didn't prepare anything today, which I have in the last few months, because I've been inspired and sometimes frustrated by the people who come before me, and today I've been very inspired that most are thinking about Atlanta Public Schools at large, which is something that you all know, I speak about all the time, so it's good to have another place instead of mine all the time. So I do want to say thank you for preserving our little King Middle School. I think that that's the least that we can do in his hometown, that we make that school a school of quality, and that we have that as a high achieving school, so I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for silving heels after sixty-two years of being ignored for renovations that finally they are getting an opportunity to have an upgraded school, which that community deserves. I want to thank Dr. Mr. Davis for including in Karen Walden and Steve Smith for helping with the climate of the school culture. I want to thank Karen for bringing, Karen Walden, for bringing zero to twelve as a part of the business of Atlanta Public Schools, which is what we've been talking about. And I want to thank you, Mr. Davis, for fiscally being responsible to the taxpayers of Atlanta Public Schools. Certainly, everything about the plan, we're all not extremely excited about, but I do think that what you have said is that we have to be fiduciary responsible for the school system in which we are responsible of. And sometimes today, it was kind of evident to me that maybe some of the board members may need a little more tr-. may need a little more training on their responsibility as related to that. When we talk about low achieving schools, and we're sitting in a seat of change, because you all are supposed to change agents, I cringe a little bit because I feel like some of it is your responsibility to ensure that there is change, to ensure that there are high achieving schools and high academic schools in your communities and in your districts. And when did board members speak about failing schools and thank you for failing, closing failing schools, I wanna almost close the door on them, because I wanna not thank them for being a part of that process. They have contributed to the lack of schools in their communities, and now they wanna now speak up on behalf of it and question Mr. Davis on being able to balance the budget a little bit better. I want us to remember that technology has gone astray in Atlanta Public Schools. Mrs. Williamson knows that I've been speaking to him for I don't know how many months about the technology in Atlanta Public Schools. We need to really put that splotch money to upgrading technology in all the schools so that we can have quality schools. I can speak no longer about equity. I'm so happy that that is being voiced by all people, so I'm just really excited about hearing that. Equity in the schools and equity audit, technology audit, let's see where we are with our public schools and let's make a difference. Duanda spoke about the data, so we'll just say, under fifty percent educating black boys, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one percent of special needs, and only sixty-six percent of regular ads. We have a long way to go. Do you all have the courage to make the difference? Do you all have the courage to change the school system? Do you all have the courage to stand up for children? And do you all have the courage to be responsible for what you take a oath for? Thank you, and that's it. Thank you.
Alyssa Silverman. Ms. Silverman will be followed by Ms. Jess. Ms. Jess will be followed by Julie Brewer.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alyssa Silverman. I'm here to talk about a school we haven't yet heard about, Boyd Elementary School. A nonprofit youth development program in northwest Atlanta. We start at elementary school at Boyd Elementary School and follow our students through middle school, high school, and into college, and often beyond college. We've had a relationship with Boyd Elementary School for over eighteen years now. All of our students attend APS schools. Boyd is in a low-income area where it's easier for kids to find trouble than it is for them to find someone who they can talk to about going to college. Boyd is an important source of stability and hope for committed parents who are invested in their children succeeding and provides access to positive role models. Boyd has met AYP for nine consecutive years. It has not proved our schools that are due to remain open in the same area. And students continue to show success with these new texts. Boyd has community partners like Hands On Atlanta and Create Your Dreams. In addition to hurting children, Boyd also has a staff of caring teachers who are here today listening because they care about their students and their teachers. These well-performing teachers will also be punished by the proposed closing. Again, you would be derailing progress for APS. Please keep Boyd Elementary School open and continue to support student success in northwest Atlanta. Thank you.
Ms. Jess will be followed by Julie Brewer.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Jess. I'm a Midtown resident, a parent of three, including a child with special needs, so I've seen the inside of many APS schools. First, I'd just like to say I do appreciate the high school cluster approach as opposed to the SRT approach. I have three main points to talk on. First, as you design these clusters, I have been APS looking explicitly planning with space to have special needs children be able to attend their neighborhood schools, to create the dedicated special needs classrooms for them. And where you do have to create classes that serve a very specific disability where you may not be able to do that in each school, to please do that within the clusters, so you do not send these children all over the city of Atlanta as currently sometimes occurs. Second, please expand Spark to serve its current neighborhoods. Our children have seen as many as three schools in a very short time period, which is very disruptive. There are ways to easily expand cafeteria seating, use the existing twenty-year lease gym, and simply add classroom space to the line out back. However, given what was written this morning, should APS decide to not do that, I would ask that APS please consider zoning to create three high-performing elementaries from your overcrowded Spark and Lynn Zones rather than adding on to Lynn and Spark both. I've laid out a map on Big Ten that would do that by repurposing Inman Middle, fully include sections of Old Fourth Ward starting at kindergarten level, and places all of the elementaries in safe, walkable areas in a manner that creates high performing, three high-performing schools from two. I would caution that while it can be quite tempting to look at two hundred students over in this area and two hundred seats here, you can't just pick those two hundred and move them there. If you have a school that's already filled with four hundred or six hundred spots, you're unlikely to lift that school. You're rather likely to create a drag-down effect. Look at ways to create lift-up effects with your zoning. There is ways to do it, there are ways to do it. And then finally, third point, please pay attention to the additive effects of some of these proposed changes on anticipated attendance. APS needs to retain its highly committed, highly involved, high-performing students. I'm concerned that the breadth of changes proposed to Inman, which includes zone changes, extensions to add areas currently not in the Grady Cluster, a split campus for sixth versus seventh and eighth, quite a distance apart, and an out-of-cluster location for the sixth campus, together create a situation that will result in loss of families that APS needs to retain to build on their success. Please build on your successes, do not dismantle them. Rather than pulling parts of Cook to the Grady Cluster, leave Cook with the Jackson Cluster to help fill King, and then serve Jackson with two middle schools. Some of your high schools have two planned, Cone and King. Give the academic support to Cone that it needs to fill from the east. Design a solution for the Grady Cluster using the Hope Hill Centennial MES Spark and Lynn existing school boundaries. Invest in the infrastructure to provide the Grady Cluster a six-to-eight middle school in a safe, walkable area. There was a thirty-million splotch line item for Midtown Middle School, which we voted for, but which has disappeared in these plans. That is an investment worth making in your successful school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Brewer, and Ms. Brewer will be followed by Melody Cook Blunt, and Ms. Blunt will be followed by Amy Lambert. Ms. Brewer?
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. My name is Julie London Brewer. I am proud to serve as Beecher Hills Elementary's PTA president. I need to hit one more time. And what I wanted to say this evening is that I am very thankful with all of the individual schools that are still being slated to close. I'm very happy that you all have taken Beecher off that list, and that that is also your recommendation, Superintendent Davis. So we're very pleased that we are no longer on the list of closing. We're also very happy with the expanded school zone that would add the number of children to our school, which will hopefully turn into having a fully staffed school. The reason why I'm up here today is not just to say thank you, of course, but to also note that there was no discussion, no notation regarding funding of the school in terms of renovations. Obviously, we're gonna be adding students, which means that we would love to have some of our heating and cooling issues resolved. We'd also like to have some of our leaks that are throughout the school, there are buckets everywhere. It would be very nice if those could also be addressed. We would like to have a, as many schools like things, but it'd be nice to have a gymnasium, also a cafeteria that is adequate for the number of students who are actually at the school. So again, we're very happy they were still open. We're also very pleased that we are extending our school zone. We are an international baccalaureate school. We believe in the importance of very challenging and very rigorous education for our students. So although our parents are gonna be highly engaged with the rest of our bigger schools, which are, of course, Young Middle School and May's High School, we would love to see those schools also become Ivy Authorized Schools. So although we are gonna work very hard in urging those two schools to move in that direction, it'd be very nice if on your side, I mean, you were also encouraging the South Side Middle School and High School to also move in that direction. So again, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate all of the work that you do.
Melody Cook Blunt will be followed by Amy Lambert, and Ms. Lambert will be followed by Adele Legrand.
Good evening. My name is Melody Cook Blunt. I'm here on behalf of Beecher Hills Elementary School. I am their local school council president. Now, I would like to say thank you for listening and keeping Beecher Hills Elementary High alive. As you know, if you expand our zone, we will get more students, and we're actually getting more students right now because of our exposure, the media, with the media, and the meetings were getting more students just because of that. But our school would not, our building would not survive. We would like to ask that you ensure more staffing, such as coaches and assistant principals, and especially more money to help renovate our aging building. Beecher Hill will continue to succeed. Even if you guys don't give us the money, we will continue to succeed and be a high achieving school. But we would like to get some of that money to help us to, you know, just go beyond that that line that we have right now. Just imagine if you give us more schools, more money for our school, you can just imagine what Beecher Hill would become in the next two, three years. I encourage everyone on the board to please come out, see Beecher, come visit our school, come see our little, what we call our little private public school in southwest Atlanta, and just come out and visit us. Thank you.
Ms. Amy Lambert. Adele Legrand. Janelle Thomas. Ms. Thomas will be followed by Mary Palmer, if you can come up, Ms. Palmer. And Ms. Palmer will be followed by Letitia LaBonne.
Good afternoon, or good evening to the board, to the superintendent. I'd like to say thank you for your service. I really was not sure whether or not I wanted to say anything to the board tonight, but I thought maybe I should. And my reflections would take me back to nineteen fifty-four. Brown versus Board of Education. And I hope you understand what I'm talking about. It takes me back to nineteen seventy with the M-to-M program that we were under court mandate to create parity in the schools. Let us not recreate that horrible time. I'm also a substitute teacher with the Atlanta Public Schools, and I do this because I care, but it certainly needs a great overhaul in that process. We're not giving respect to very competent, some very competent people. We are also utilizing people who may not have the level of competencies that are required for our children. We are certainly not providing the training that they need to stay up to date on what is needed in the classrooms. Some of us take it upon ourselves to make sure that we're trained because we care, but we certainly are not being compensated at an equitable level for the work that is being done. And I don't hear anybody really talking about how we're using substitute teachers in the classrooms and how we are sometimes magnating, or not magnating, or encouraging them to take long-term positions without any extra compensation
That's right.
for the extra work that is required when they're filling in for a regular teacher that is taking an extended leave. We really do need to look at that. We also need to look at the whole and how it is working or is not working.
Think about that.
But we have a responsibility for the legacy that we are creating this day and the future of our city, of our nation, and I'm, and I'm hoping, and I've said this before and I'm not saying it publicly
Thank you.
about Rome, let us not go the way of Rome during the, I think it's five hundred AD.
Ms. Mary I Amaze Palmer, and will be followed by Ms. Letitia LaBonne.
Good evening, Dr. Davis, board members. My name is Mary Palmer, and I am maze. I have dotted down points on several topics that have already been addressed, so I won't be repetitive. I will, however, just let you know that some of my concerns were, were in the area. Please, I do feel that we should slow down the mergers, the closures
Right.
until we have the concrete plan to fix quality education
Right.
and what the recovery for the closed schools will be. I'm very concerned when I hear a local school council does not represent the school and community they are supposed to serve, when parents still don't know how to support the schools that their children are in. Superintendent Davis, I do agree with you that I P is not necessarily the best curriculum. I personally would like to see a STEAM and an IP program in the maze cluster. But the thing that I'm most concerned about, and I got a little riled up this evening, had to do with Latin Academy when they spoke earlier. Charter schools are really okay if they are opening for the reasons intended. Charter schools say that they are about giving a community another choice. But another choice is not necessarily a better choice. Latin Academy specifically solicited parents and teachers from my community cluster school. I question the charter school management that broke the rules before they were even approved. After opening, staying open will be most important, so I worry about what practices will be conducted after opening. Will they truly deliver to our students what they promised? Will they do like so many other charter schools by cherry picking and lemon dropping? I know you approved Latin Academy already, but please, board, I ask you, I implore you, that you do your due diligence before approving more charter schools in our neighborhood.
Right.
The last thing I'd like to comment on is, because I just heard it earlier this evening, was that about the proposal to solicit, I guess, supporters for the graduation programs and such surrounding graduations. Having graduated three from APS, I think that it is most significant. I keep the program right next to the diploma of my kids. So I ask that you not, if you do make this decision, that you not pass the cost on now to the schools to save the money, and ask the schools to start raising money and soliciting those programs. Thank you.
Ms. LaBonne will be followed by Shaquita Cerly, and then Jaden Cerly. Ms. LaBonne?
Good afternoon, board. I'm very disappointed with the board because you're racially, demographics, my children. My children are boys. They do not play sports here because you know why? APS do not have sports funded for children in the sixth grade that would like to attend. You have made a clause against that. When I grew up in APS, I was in the Carver High School, it used to be Clark Atlanta University Campus. Therefore, y'all took out the dry cleaning, y'all took out all of the magnet programs that significantly will help children and study and enable them. Y'all do not understand the significance what y'all are doing. For one, my children said, but don't yell at the ministry school. We have a partnership with Coca-Cola, we have a partnership with Atlanta public schools. We have things going on that you all do not know about. Why? Because we have not seen y'all there, we have not seen out there what y'all face. I don't see not, nobody come to the school and ask the children, what are they doing today? How are you doing? I don't see none of that. As part of the board, I would like to see the board there, because the board plays the important role in their child. If you all would like us to see you as a board, be a board, come to the school. And Kennedy, whoever on SRT, y'all office is down there, but y'all have to study resources. Y'all have not, they, our parents know, they have not got implemented. There's a lot of things going on, we have rising expectations in Kennedy. There's a lot of things going on, but y'all have said on news Kennedy is structuring for closing. But I grew up there too, Kennedy Middle School, what swim pool, well, we had a swim team then. We don't have no, don't have a swim team there, that's, that's in structuring for the children. That's why our children are in trouble, in jail, got a probation. I know a lot of them that can have a fine due now. So therefore, make sure you have, after school program, that structuring for children, have some programs. Don't only just have some programs over in Corn, because I was over there too. I went to Corn Middle School too. So I did all of these little schools. Well, you went to the magnet school at Emory, I went to Moore High School, Science Camp, I did all that. Spotswood Carver, the Junior National Health Office of America, Spotswood Carver High School, I was in National Vocational and Technical Arm Society. I did that. But you know what? Y'all took that away. Y'all took that away. So y'all need to implement things that will be good for the children and start hurting the children, because right now, I don't see nothing that's structured to enable none of my sons, nothing at all. Because my sons don't play recreation here, because you know why? Teachers have a nasty attitude. Assistant groups will do not know how to talk to a child. They talk to a female as if she's a female on the streets instead of a female student present in the classroom. And I have seen this. If y'all would like to train, train your teachers to listen to the students. Stop training them to just one focus mind, one narrow minded, because a lot of your teachers are narrow minded, they do not know how to open them, they cannot establish a great foundation with some of your students. So you know, that's why a lot of your students are leaving APS or they're not graduating because of the teachers. You're structuring, you always want to do CRCT. Give my child another test, start with basic education before you want to test them with CRT and a breadthened test.
Searl.
Searl, I'm sorry, thank you. And you'll be followed by Jaden Searls. Jaden Searls will be followed by Vernetta Nurdine.
Just really, really quick, want to say, I am a parent of a child that goes to Boyd Elementary. And the only thing, it's convenient to a lot of parents that's out there, they are upgrading the outside, the landscaping, they have a nature walk out there, they are upgrading the school. My child is in third grade, he's been there since kindergarten, and I've never had a problem with any of the teachers. They, that school is like a family, and since day one, when they take on a child, they every-